...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this school board meeting a District 544 order. And Clerk, will you establish a forum?
Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lenkey.
Here.
Missy Hermes here, Stephen Biggessa.
Here.
We have a forum.
Could I get a motion to approve our agenda for tonight?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Agenda's approved. There's a resolution tonight on acknowledgements. Thank you to Jeff and Gina Atkinson, Barry and Pamela Fletcher, and Alex Halverson for their donations to the Otter Angel account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals. Thank you to Harmony Studios for their donation of books and cleaning rods to the Kennedy Secondary School Band Department. Could someone offer that resolution to move for its adoption?
So moved.
In a second. Second. Okay, Kirby. Steven Kirby.
Sure.
Yeah. Any discussion? That resolution, or take roll call.
Yep.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lenkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Biggessa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Missy? And we have reports tonight, so our first report's from Amelia Lamar, High School English Curriculum.
Good evening.
Thank you. Left and right, did that wrong.
Good evening, thank you for taking the time to see me. First, I would like to say happy School Board Recognition Month to each of you. While one designated amount of time isn't enough to recognize all that you do, just know that your time to our community and our school district is appreciated. Thank you. This evening, I will be sharing with you a curriculum option for our high school and ALC English Departments. I do recognize that this proposal is coming a little bit earlier than a typical adoption proposal. That is simply because our high school and ALC staff are preparing for the new trimester schedule next year, and thus need adequate materials to prepare for. So this is going to serve as a partial curriculum proposal, part one, if you will. The remainder of the 7th through 12th grade English Language Arts proposal will come as expected later this week. I wanted to just start with a little bit of a refresher on Minnesota learning requirements. I think it is important to recall and keep at the front of our minds what is expected of us here as educators. Unlike many states, Minnesota has some additional requirements. In order to provide the high-quality instruction that we expect, our students are required by law to teach grade-level benchmarks. These terms are each used a little bit differently from state to state. Not all states require benchmarks, which in Minnesota work as kind of like the stepping stone, if you will, for grade levels, and serve under larger anger standards. So, when we evaluate curriculum, we are looking at these benchmarks at each grade level to make a decision about what will be used to support teachers' instructions and students' learning of those benchmarks. When our English Language Arts Review Committee formed early at the beginning of this school year, we began by planning out what our process would look like. Our work and efforts were led by the district's mission statement and ensuring that each student is able to reach their full potential. After planning our process and setting our focus, we began reviewing our current curriculum, researching other options, and piloting some lessons. We also met with representatives from a variety of programs from different publishers and companies as well. Our high school and ALC English Departments have spent numerous hours researching and evaluating a variety of options in order to reach this decision here tonight. I am incredibly appreciative of all of their time and expertise and passion for bringing resources that best fit our district's needs, meeting our state's requirements, and differentiation for every student. Andrew Millard, one of our Ice to English teachers and I, presented this decision to the DACRAC Committee in mid-January, of which I shared those responses with you prior to this meeting. In beginning this process, teachers did a thorough evaluation of the current curricular resources that they have, and with all prospective options. Using a detailed evaluation, we looked at all of the typical curriculum components, such as rigor, standard alignment, coherence, and so on. We also looked through the lens of student learning experiences and supporting a love for reading, as well as the program's ability to support teaching practices that we would expect to see here for high-quality instruction. As you can see here with our current curriculum, it's a little outdated. There are references in these materials that refer to the information highway, the introduction of the internet, and this new phenomenon of computers in schools. So I think it's safe to say we have advanced a little since then, and I maybe do for a little bit of an update. The 9-12 High School and ALC group have decided on a program called Common Lit. This program is a core instruction program that really uses a hands-on approach with a wide variety of differentiation options. The committee was concerned about any new curriculum's ability to be engaging for students, promote a love and motivation toward reading, and its ability to meet the required Minnesota State standards and benchmarks, as well as having an appropriate balance between digital and print materials. Common Lit was thoroughly evaluated by the committee, administration, and others to ensure that each of these concerns were addressed and met. Common Lit is being proposed to you here tonight as the core curriculum for 9th and 10th grade English, as well as a secondary curriculum option for all 9-12 English classes. The alignment to Minnesota State standards that is available, and the potential for consistency among teachers and students is certainly a plus. I will speak more to this shortly. Please keep in mind that this is not the core, meaning the primary curriculum proposal for courses such as, I can't think what it is, like Composition and Writing or Special Education. Those are not forgotten about, they're just not included in this Part 1. Overall, Common Lit had some key pieces that helped it stand above the rest. Some of those are that it was highly engaging for students, with different approaches to each lesson, and concepts with hands-on experiences. Differentiation is built into all parts of the curriculum. There are options for everything from audio for some texts, you can enlarge font size for students with visual impairments, digital annotation and note-taking, choosing question type, meaning if you want short response versus multiple choice for the same concept, individualized and whole-class recommendations to continue learning, and print options for all parts of the curriculum. These options will all work together to help teachers meet students' needs for all of our students, including struggling learners, reading preference if that's important, and extension options as well. I do think it's important to point out here that our English Department has a deep passion for reading. Therefore, to ensure that these differentiation options are all easily and readily available, I have set aside the availability for the English Department to create printed master copies of their curriculum, beginning in the 23-24 school year. This will include all lesson guides and materials, worksheets and assessments, and other teaching resources to ensure that teachers can meet each of their students' needs with an appropriate balance between print and digital resources. Which is something that is extremely important to our English Department and has been the forefront of this entire process. Continuing on here, the digital platform itself is very well organized and easy to use. It is also parable with Google Classroom, which is a tool that is highly familiar to teachers, parents, and students in addition. Texts and resources are also available in Spanish and other languages upon request, which will provide support for our EL families, as well as our EL teachers who are trying to support students in our English classes as well. There is a lot of focus on academic vocabulary, developing strong research skills, genre studies, and more. There's also a sufficient amount of at-home and family support available. New additions will likely to be repurchased, which is quite ideal, as opposed to purchasing texts that would inevitably either be updated to a new edition or, I guess, have a shelf left. Lessons can be filtered in a variety of ways. It can be filtered through student reading levels, specific genres, theme, literary, device, specific standards, grade level, and language, or a combination of any of those things. This will also be a great asset for our teachers in ensuring that each student is reaching their expected learning outcomes while also meeting our state requirements. One of the biggest perks here is that this program does have the ability to filter specifically through Minnesota State standards. The click of a button, it says Minnesota State standards, and it automatically updates all of the materials for you. This is true for all content and assessments. It can also be searched by specific Minnesota standard in order to pull up any resources that are met within a specific standard if teachers are looking for something that way as well. Common Sense Education is a highly reputable source for curriculum review, and they give Common Lit a very high learning rating of five stars, with high scores in the areas of student engagement, pedagogy, and support. As I mentioned earlier, Common Lit can be specifically filtered through the Minnesota State English Language Arts Standards. This, along with our ongoing PLC work, can allow teachers to ensure that they are meeting their requirements that are given to us by the Minnesota Department of Education, as well as the rigor presented in our state testing demands. Common Lit will allow teachers to continue this work, including identifying standard-based assessments to use at a team level so that we can keep our focus on our students and their learning. This, again, will also allow our English Department the ability to prepare curriculum maps to meet the timelines of the new schedule coming next year, and be adequately prepared to support students in this change as well. Upon your approval here tonight, Common Lit is also willing to provide our English teachers with immediate access to their teacher accounts for the remainder of this school year at no additional cost, in order to help teachers prepare for next year. This does not include student use yet, only teachers with the purpose of planning for next year. Student implementation would not begin until this fall. So, the committee's proposal tonight is pretty short and sweet. There's only one thing on that list up there, in that we are proposing Common Lit as the core instruction for 9th and 10th grade English courses, as well as a secondary curricular resource for all 9th through 12th English courses. Live training and professional development sessions are included in this, to ensure that teachers are fully prepared to implement, one prior to the beginning of the upcoming school year, and a refresher slash extension of training later on in the school year as well. This is being proposed to you, again, now, in order to provide teachers with the availability to adequately prepare their courses for next school year. DACRAC feedback forums, again, are available for you to review. The feedback from DACRAC was primarily positive, with the focus of questions understandably around the balance between digital and print materials. This was and continues to be the central focus of our English Department as well. To which I do strongly believe that we do have a solid plan in place to ensure that teachers do have print copies of the curriculum available in order to support all of our students' needs as the year corrects. At this time, I will accept any questions from the board.
Questions are really?
Can you go back just a few, a couple slides here? Keep going.
Come on, stop.
Keep going. Oh, it's here. I think it's one... No, no, it wasn't. So, just a quick question on the print it to grade level, reading level. So, certain people have a certain reading level, and I know there was, you have that part in it. So, are they able to print that off for that student for that reading level? Then when they have to do it, I'm just thinking of students that...
Yes, you can have the same concept or text at a variety of different levels.
Okay. Yes, so my question was just basically, I know you had like a book binder being printed out ahead of time?
Correct.
So, the question is, is just during, if they have a student that they know is not at that grade level, they will be able to print that out for that student, kind of individualized?
Yes. And that would be very easy to pull up within the program as well.
Okay, all right. And then, is the student able to set that, or does the teacher have to set their reading level for?
That's a great question. I don't know that answer.
Okay. That was the only questions that I really had. Otherwise, I thought it was good.
Can we move back to the highlights in the class? This is actually the first page of...
What?
The very first page of your presentation. I think you have that one. Go on. Maybe I'm look... Okay. I was looking at this, it says $24,000 for an Ager contract. That's $24,000, so that's $3,000 a year.
Yes, it's a nonprofit program. And their mission is...
So, I'm just looking, I'm the finance guy, of course. I'm looking at costs of this, and I just look at, you know, we're getting this curriculum for years, and I'm assuming there's going to be some updates if there's, if there's needed somewhere in that year timeframe.
Yes, there's no continuing...
Right.
There's no re-purchasing.
I'm just comparing and contrasting $24,000 for eight years of curriculum to how much those books would cost if we had to buy all the books for all the students.
Yes. And that was one of the driving points.
A multiple of that per year.
Ten times that cost.
Per year. Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
That was one of the driving points as well.
Yep. Thank you.
Anything else?
As far as the writing skills, I saw in the core, it was nine and 10, and then, is there much of a focus of the writing skills in 11 and 12 as well? Maybe it just wasn't listed. Just curious.
Like, in 11th and 12th grade writing courses?
Yes.
That will be part of Part 2's proposal, that would be our Composition and Writing course.
Okay.
So, this could be a secondary resource for them certainly, but it would not be their core.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, I, uh, we're next to refer to is Kirby Anderson with the 544 Education Foundation Finance and Activities.
Yes, nothing on activities. The Finance Committee we did meet on January 31st at 8:00 in the morning. Jeff and Matt and Renee and Natalie and I, and we discussed rates for preschool, and I think that's...
Yeah.
Yep. And so, we kicked around the different rates, the different options. Renee put together a nice piece with Jeff on what the difference in revenue would be. Of course, we always wonder what the, the more we raise the rate, well, it's the economic thing, the microeconomic thing, where as you raise the rate, then the demand will go down. So, we want to find that sweet spot in the middle where we can have something that's fair to parents where they really want, so I can say, "Here's what we've got." So, we thought we did that, so I'll sit on agenda later. I think we kicked around just a couple other ideas, we talked a little bit about, nothing that's on the agenda tonight. I think we talked a little bit about ICETIME, we talked a little bit about the, the, back to you, the normal, things like that. So, anyway, a good Finance Committee meeting, and I think we're starting to work on the budget now, is what I saw in the report as well. So, that's what I have for the Finance Committee, unless anybody has any questions. Got specific questions on the preschool numbers, or pass it back to the session for that motion. We have had two foundation meetings, 544 Foundation meetings, since our last, since my last report. The Foundation four did meet on January 12th. That was the week that we were at, the day that we were at NSBA. I sent in most of that online. So, some of the highlights are the major donor newsletter went out on December 20th. Applications for scholarships are updated on the website and in the counseling office. We sent an email out to all of our alumni, which is literally thousands and thousands of alumni, and we had about 50% open rate and a 9% click rate, which is actually considered pretty good for that kind of a mass, and then, display cases were to be cleaned and updated, and I saw in our meeting from this week that they have been, that's been done out there. The Executive Committee and the Finance Committee of the 544 Foundation met on January 9th, and reviewed job descriptions, bylaws, and they also looked at some of our investments and what our investment portfolio should look like. And then, we have, I think once a month, we have somebody going on the radio with Mary Dolan. So, that's, that was last month's meeting. The meeting we had just this past Thursday was at noon on February 9th. The major donor newsletter number two is going out in a couple weeks. We do have a thing with the IRS where a form didn't get filled in time, and we got a penalty, and I guess we had a six-day extension on that. It's going to be where the IRS is asking us for an extension, if that's what they did. The Legends Committee for the Golf Elite is rounding up some different names for who they're going to honor this year, and I think probably one of the more interesting parts of the meeting, besides the finance things and what's going on in the investment world, was we reviewed the strategic plan. The Foundation has a strategic plan, they update it every five years, and we're, I think, the fourth year of that right now. And the main goals, they have goals and then have objectives, just like we do, and just in interest of time, I'll just say that their three main goals are to develop a marketing plan, and then again, there's many objectives underneath that. Second one is communication and collaboration with kindred groups, and the third one is an effort to get more legacy donors, so. So, those are the three main goals of the Foundation, again, with many objectives, and they will be updated and at strategic plans sometime here in the next year and a half as we move forward. And again, they're very good shape financially, about $1.8 million in total assets. So, that's my report on the Foundation. Most of those questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Kirby. We'll move on to Melanie Cole with the Special Ed Co-op in Region 1.
The Special Ed Co-op met today. We had scant agenda for approval. We got the Director's Report, then we did a discontinuance of a contract. We spent a lot of time on discussion on services from the co-op, and how they are distributed, and where we go from here. So, I anticipate we will continue a discussion the next meeting with more information about adding an administrator, and hopefully some statistical data to indicate why that would be warranted, and what they would do, and then also to talk about bylaws. There's some points of discussion there. So, it was a long meeting today with a lot of discussion there. And, Region 1 did not meet due to weather, so that's all that I have. Any questions?
Just a question on the adding the administration. Do they talk also about just the current administration, how they allocate their time now?
No.
Okay. So, they didn't have any data or anything yet on that part?
No, I continue to ask for that, and I'm just not getting data.
Okay.
So, is there any measurable thing that they can say, how they're going to provide more services to clients by adding that position?
Not yet. There's just really not an indication what that person would do, and how it would detract from the other people. The Director today thought maybe finding out what the potential applicant skillset might be, and then going from there, but the board fed back with information that we'd really like to get in outline before we approve getting an applicant, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Melanie? Okay, we'll move on to Missy Hermes with Staff Development and Policy.
Okay, Staff Development Committee met on February 6th, and that was a good meeting. There's a lot of discussion and talk about the Staff Development Day that's coming up this month, and I saw that the email went out to certified and non-certified staff, that they can start signing up for the different breakout sessions, and then the speaker, Nick Thoroni, I say, I think that's right, yeah, so that'll be, that's coming up this month. And then, also, I guess I misspoke at the last meeting when I said that one of the breakout sessions was going to be on project-based learning, so that is not. But, we did see that very interesting presentation on reading, and that's what Amelia Lamar will be presenting instead. So, teachers that were asking for additional training for project-based learning, we're going to find out specifically what it is that they need, and then see how they can find that. And then, the other thing that I found very interesting, there's a lot of talk about, remember that in order to renew your license, you have to take cultural competency training. And so, the Staff Development Committee and the Continuing Education Committee, we, the Staff Development Committee has a subcommittee on cultural competency, and working with the Continuing Education Committee, they have come up with a plan that teachers will need to complete four hours of cultural competency training over the five years.
Any questions on that?
Okay, and then the Policy Committee met. We met on February 3rd, and there were four policies that were discussed. I'm just going to talk about three of them. One of them is an Internet Acceptable Use and Safety Policy, and so some wording was added. One of the things I think is significant was, this is a statute that was passed through the legislature about preschool and kindergarten students having limited time on screen, and so that is going to be added, and then a lot of the technology policy there is vetted by the Technology Department. The protection and privacy of pupil records, just looking at protecting parent and student privacy issues. And then, the other one is a policy that was recommended to us on school meals and that Otter Angel account. That's been adapted to meet our needs.
Any questions for Missy? Thanks, Missy.
I'll move on to myself and just speak on behalf of the fourth policy that we discussed on District Wellness, Physical Activity and Nutrition, and in partnership with Partnership for Health and our Wellness Committee here at the district. A couple of highlights are just on the staff wellness side of things, and just ensuring that school employees' physical, social, emotional, and mental health needs are met. It's pivotal to their wellbeing and to the students before academic success, and there's just some points that support that addition. And then, also, that we will be doing a triennial assessment, so at least once every three years as part of the Minnesota Department of Educational, we will be part of that triennial assessment, just taking a look at this policy and, I mean, hitting, hitting the points and following the policy, what kind of progress we made, what kinds of things can be improved on. So, that's a partnership with Partnership for Health, to help guide us on that. And then, the Wellness Committee has not yet met since our last meeting, and then Jeff has a little bit with buildings and ground in his report tonight. But, we did meet this morning, the Facilities Committee met this morning, just to talk about space within all of our buildings, and what the needs are going to be, and what enrollment projections look like for the next few years, and just try to drive down some sort of assessment without any questions.
All right, then we'll move on to Matt Lenkey.
Okay, Minnesota High School League, they did meet February 2nd. Just a little bit, I got some information that we got at the end, and I thought it'd be kind of interesting just to report to the general public. So, the Minnesota High School League serves 771 schools, what they call schools. Out of that, 374, 48% of public schools, so that's where your majority of your students are. 87 are non-public schools, which is about 11%, 64 are charter schools, which is 8%, and 246 are home schools that the Minnesota High School League, that they are part of the Minnesota High School League. So, I just thought that was kind of some interesting information. So I just thought that was kind of some interesting information that they reported on. They also reported on that out of the 500 athletic directors in the state of Minnesota that are full-time, 100 of them, or 20%, are new in the last two years. So they've had quite a bit of turnover in the athletic department for directors. The other thing that I record on is boys volleyball was, is an emergent status now. And so one of the things that they talked about is that, is that eventually this will become a Minnesota High School League sport in the spring.
Spring.
Yeah, in the spring. So that is coming to, eventually will happen. So they have a process now in place to basically make sports an actual sponsored and not just kind of randomly. What, choosing or not choosing a sport to be actually part of the Minnesota High School League. So that was one of the things that they put in. And I thought this was kind of interesting, so name, image, and likeness. Students being paid for their name, image, and likeness. There are 10 of them in the state of Minnesota now that are high school students. So I thought that was kind of an interesting thing that they reported on and I thought people would kind of be interested in just to hear. So that was kind of.
Do you know where they're located?
I do not. I would imagine, oh, I think, I would say larger schools, of course, than probably the metro. I know the first one was a, was a girls' hockey goalie. And that was the first one I got, so. So for that one, I do remember. On the meeting itself, the, basically they approved 13 weight classes for girls' and boys' wrestling effective on 2023, 2024 school year. And girls' wrestling is definitely increasing. So they all have two different sites that they're going to be hosting. So that continues to grow. The other thing that they changed is some elimination for, I hate to say it, we've got a soccer parent here, but they are not going to have overtime anymore in regular season games. They will end in a tie. So everybody loves ties and there you go, so it can get to be a tie. So that was kind of a, I thought, well, yeah.
Did they say why that was proposed?
They did not, they just had the Activity Advisory Proposal, eliminating of overtime. And I don't, I don't know why. Also, they put in also that if you are ahead at halftime by five goals or more, there'll be running time in the second half. So that was just, so. Anyway, that was kind of an interesting one that they put in, that I thought, absolutely present. And then the other thing that they voted down, which I know has been asked many, many times, is three classes in tennis. And that was voted down again. And one of the things that's unique about tennis is that a lot of times they will group the large schools, like football. You know, they put the larger schools in the top division. In tennis, they group the smallest schools. And so 64 of the smallest schools in the lowest class, and then everybody else gets to compete in the upper division. So like, like Fergus Falls is always paired with Brainerd and St. Cloud Tech. And of course, these all these facilities have indoor tennis all year long. So it's just a difference of time and students. So anyway, they voted that down again, which is, in my opinion, very disappointing, so. But anyway, that's all my report.
Quick question on boys volleyball.
Yes.
What we see, well, you've seen it for years in your coaching. I mean, we have a great backcourt club, we have a great youth hockey program, we have soccer parents that take care of things when the kids are young. Do you see that happening also with volleyball? Where, I mean, do we see it now with girls' volleyball that the parents are involved and have, we have youth program or kind of the back, backcourt club?
So I would take it like this, so it'd be something like, in my opinion, be like lacrosse, as that's come up. Is, is a lot of the teams that have formed a course are formed and then, yes, you're going to have parents basically bringing that up in the younger levels to actually have it work.
And then I guess my question is that if they compete with area schools, is that going to be in the spring then, or is?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, wait, wait, the parent one?
Well, yeah, I mean, youth volleyball, I'm looking at gym time.
Yes.
And facilities and things, that's.
Correct. Absolutely, 100%.
Okay.
And that's why, to be honest, on the, on the emergent status, they had to have X number of schools that had it going. And you know that that's in the metro.
Yeah.
Because there's just a lot more facilities that they can access. And so whereas you go farther out, it gets to be tighter and tighter on, on, I mean, even during springtime, spring sports.
Yeah.
In general, I hate to say it, in the central and upper Minnesota, you usually are not outside to start.
Right.
Indoors. And so the facility is definitely.
Overbooked already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And try to toward other sports. So again, it's like anything else, if a school district decides to do it, that's an individual school that participates. And it's just like Central Lakes Conference right now. You have, if you offer the sport, then you participate within the Central Lakes Conference. But if you don't offer it, then you don't. So. And I think it'd be very difficult, at this point in time, to ever offer boys volleyball in the spring with the facility structure that we have right now.
Correct.
Thank you. So next report, Steve.
Actually, I missed the curriculum meeting for work. I could riff for a while.
I got you, Steve.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, I got you. So our last report will be from Superintendent Ray.
Good evening. First of all, it is nice to see more sunshine and some longer days. Yes, it gives me hope that spring will get here eventually. First, some thank yous. I want to thank our school counselors, it was School Counselor Appreciation Week last week. And certainly very thankful for the outreach they do to students and the support they give. We can look back on our, from what we know anecdotally, but also from the results of our Minnesota Student Survey and communications we've had with our colleagues at Lakeland Mental Health. And simply, our students are dealing with a lot of things on their plates these days. The most common therapy being, or support being given by Lakeland, et cetera, is for trauma and for anxiety. And so again, my appreciation for all the outreach they give and for their communication and assistance to our families. Also want to recognize U.S. School Board for your time and dedication. We tabulated the number of years of service to this district and our students that are represented, represented by you folks here is just shy of 70, which is really remarkable. And speaks to your longstanding service to our children's community, your continued interest and passion in what we do, the environment we set for our kids, and how we support our families. And the general public probably doesn't recognize the amount of background work that you do outside of these meetings, preparing, reading up on information, reviewing reports, et cetera. But on behalf of our school and our community, thank you very much for your dedicated service. It is much appreciated, and you guys do a fantastic job. I want to thank the Student Council and Mr. Tilke for the snowball activities. I think everything pretty much went off without a hitch with the exception of Friday. And that wasn't an issue, it just was that the temperatures were so cold. There are normally some outdoor activities on that Friday that we moved entirely indoors because of the cold temperatures. But I had heard, I believe, Mr. Anderson had told me, I think they had sold 400 pre-tickets for the dance on Saturday. And so that was going to be a really large turnout from our students for that. One of the largest that we've had in recent memory. Had the opportunity to see the middle school production of Annie. Terrific job by the kids and want to thank Director Ashley Sands, General Cosby, and Technical Director Mike Donahoe. We saw the Thursday night performance and the lower section of the auditorium was pretty much filled with people. So it was wonderful to see everyone come out. There were very, many, many performers in that production. So it was nice to see such a large contingency of students involved in a, in a great activity. Awesome, congratulatory notes due. Our spelling bee winners, first Dexter Felstool, grade six. He placed first in the school, third place at regionals. So Dexter will go on and compete at the multi-region State Bee coming up on February 21st. And congratulations to Sarah Eklund, grade seven. She took second place for the school, but was top 10 at the regional spelling bee. And then I also want to recognize a couple of our younger spellers. Truman Steinbrenner, a name familiar to us on staff here, was the third grade champion. And Colin Schroder was the fourth grade spelling bee champion. So congratulations to all of those students for their fine work. Math counts, our team took home the third place in their most recent competition. So congratulations to Jaden Trigvey, Jacob, and Ally. And Trigvey was recognized as a fourth place finisher in the individual competition. Estee Versteg and David Ronavick are both state qualifiers for Nordic skiing or cross-country skiing. And Coach Josh Scharnberg was named Coach of the Year for this region. So congratulations to those athletes and Coach Scharnberg. So great activity again and nice to see healthy participation. DAPRAC update. So the math curriculum implementation update, we adopted math last year. Mr. Kolbeck was here to give a report on how that implementation has been going. Bridges is the curriculum and Number Corner is a piece of how that is carried out. Biggest thing was the amount of prep that goes into the delivery of the lessons. And the staff, teachers recognized that when they did that adoption. And so some things that you'll see in that kind of middle paragraph were done on behalf of the district to provide a little extra support for that adoption and its rollout. So a couple of teachers had some summertime to prep lessons. We also purchased some organizers for them to help ease the amount of work that goes with any new curricular rollout. But this one in particular was going to be a little bit more challenging. Overall, the teachers see the value in Number Corner and Bridges and Fields engaging for students. And as they become more and more familiar with the curriculum, the prep work associated with it will hopefully become less burdensome. And then Mr. Hurst gave a report on the Reveal Math and Alex in grades six to eight. Teachers also reported that both are very engaging for students. There was one question maybe about a unit that they thought didn't line up with the age level or difficulty level. But for the most part, the teachers have been very, very pleased with it. Just recall that with that Alex, it is essentially an interactive software. So it takes the student response and then it alters instruction and the level of problems that the student is going to see based on where the, each individual child is at. So it's very intuitive in how it differentiates based on the needs of each individual child. The high school English curriculum, we already heard that update. Registration night, so this is a different process from years past on the high school side. Historically, our school counselors would have gone into the classrooms, done presentations, and then students complete their enrollment paperwork and register for next year's classes. This year, it is being done in conjunction with the advisors. So it was by appointment, so the family will set up the appointment with the child's advisor. The family will come in with the student, they'll go over the registration materials for next year. So we have that February 13th and the 16th. It's also hard to believe a little bit, but we've got parent-teacher conferences coming up for the spring already, K through eight. So those are February 27th and March 2nd. Upcoming events, one of them is this evening with the middle school and fourth grade chamber orchestra concert. And then tomorrow, we have, we're hosting varsity girls' hockey section semifinal. And so good luck to our girls, they've had a terrific season so far and would be considered probably the favorite to come out of our section. But of course, like a lot of sports, you never know what's going to happen when the puck drops or et cetera, so. But feel free to go and support the girls, it'd be a nice opportunity for our seniors. That will be their last home hockey game in Fergus Falls. Facility management. So we're making good progress on the commercial teaching kitchen. We're basically just a stone's throw away from having those final inspections done by both the state and our city. And once those are done, we'll be able to start having classes in there. These are a couple pictures of where that's at to date, and it's going to be a really nice educational space. We're really excited about it. The other thing that we're excited about is the progress on the Otter Field House. And that has been very, very well received by our wrestling, wrestling program and also by our gymnastics program. The fold-up or roll-up bleachers arrived today. So over the course of the next day or two, those will be installed. And we're really excited about that because on March 3rd, we are going to host a varsity basketball game in the Otter Field House against the Purim Yellow Jackets. And one of the reasons this is going to be so much fun, first of all, Purim has a really strong team, so it's a great matchup. But if, if you were to go into the Purim High School Gymnasium, that is, that is as modern a facility as you will find in the upper part of the state. It looks like a college gym. And as a dichotomy, we're going to host them in a historic field house. And it will be just a wonderful kind of maybe throwback moment about what a great atmosphere we can have in, in the Otter Field House. And that place, I'm sure, is going to be packed with a ton of energy and excitement. So we're really looking forward to that, a really great way to close out our winter sports season. Chiller ship date update. And so I just got this today, and this is actually good news. The chiller units themselves were going to be shipped in March. Now they're being projected to be shipped on the 20th of February. Just keep in mind, that's not our last hurdle on this project. We still need the switchgear and we need that transformer. So those are scheduled for delivery later in the spring. But it'll be nice to have the chiller units at least on our premises. And with that, I'll turn over to any questions.
I had just one, one addition, it's hard to give congratulations, but we have a ninth grader Caleb Frann who plays first in state wrestling for ninth grade in Yonder.
Oh, that's awesome.
Get back to what I was talking about earlier, with the feeder program, with the parents doing what they do when they get together. But yeah, so he won all those matches and he was the state champion in ninth grade. So now he'll be working in varsity the next four years.
That's awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our general consensus items. We have the minutes from the January 23rd, 2023 board meeting. And we'll go to Kirby for the bills and our church reports.
We have treasurer's report. Our fund balance right now is, it's always changed, we got up about 30,000 from last month, so it's still around 15,000, 300,000. So the bills, basically what that means is the bills that came, that were paid matched the GFC that we had coming in, almost to the dollar. So this afternoon, Missy and I met with Renee and we went through about nine pages of bills. Some of the highlights, we looked at $9,600 that we spent for cross-country skis out at the Prairie Bot Lines. And that's a pass-through, that's provided by a grant. We had $6,600 that the boosters had paid for us, again, another pass-through for screening athletic events. $83,000 that went for the chiller that we just talked about, that should be shipped in at the end of this month. Staff development, a payment that went out there, $50,000 for our security cameras, that we're updating all of our cameras in the buildings. So not a lot of real outstanding things. $6,200 for some of the controllers over in Oak and Roosevelt. And $5,200 for risers for the music department. So overall, nothing much out of the ordinary this month, pretty much is as usual, if I can say that. Thanks to Renee, she answered all her questions, as she always does. And unless you have questions, that's my bills and treasurer's report.
Any questions for Kirby? Thank you. I'm going to move to Renee, or Renee to eliminate the great.
You can call me Renee. Good evening, everyone. My, my little report is very short, which is a good thing. Certified staff retirement, Mark Aho. He has worked here, this is his twenty-seventh year, and a resolution follows enter new business. Um, so we definitely thank his, thank him for his service. Um, and then support staff resignation, Greg Johnson, now our supervisor at Adams. And then to replace, uh, Greg is Teresa Hersberg. And she'll, she started at Roy Sticks. So I would recommend those for, for football.
Uh, can I get a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved. Second.
Is that Melanie and, and Kirby?
Yep, that's good.
Any discussion on that? All in favors?
Did I have a quick question? What, uh, there's a Pemberton bill for two ninety-six. Do you know what that was for by chance?
Which page?
I don't mean to put you on the spot. The page.
Or sixteen of them.
Do you have a check number on the one?
Yeah, that was sixty-four, nine, fifty.
Let's see my check number.
No. What's, what are you looking at?
Oh, I was looking at the code. I'm sorry.
No, that's our check number.
So sixty-one, nine, ninety.
Uh, description it has here is public relations.
Okay. Okay. I'm just curious. Thank you.
Public, so I have, I have a break here.
All right, all in favor of approving the general consent items, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That passes, so we'll move on to, there's no old business, we'll move on to new business. We have a resolution on the retirement of Mark Aho. Whereas Mark Aho became as, began as employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in June nineteen ninety-six. And whereas Mark has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public School for twenty-seven years. And whereas Mark has been a dedicated physical education teacher for the school district. And now therefore be resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Mark Aho for his twenty-seven years of service to the Fergus Falls Public School. Um, could I get someone to offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
Offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
In a second.
Second it.
Missy, can we get a roll call?
Yes. Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Um, so we have a motion to approve FM Bank Public Funds Banking, I'm sorry, a resolution. FM Bank Public Funds Banking Resolution, account ending in thirty-four oh seven and account ending in zero, zero, five, five. To, can I read this whole thing you read?
Uh, well, do, why don't you just give a quick briefing on it?
It's for our two checking accounts. So one is our general checking account, and the other one is for our flex benefit claims. And this is just to update the authorized signers now that we have, um, newly, um, you in a new position. So it's just the three board, three board members now, and Jeff and I. So just updating the signers for the bank.
I believe the first paragraph should cover the signers so that they're identified, and, and the rest will be in our minutes. Does that sound fun with you, Renee? So I would read, I would read the first paragraph.
Okay.
Because identifies who the agents are and such.
Okay. Resolve that FM Bank Financial Institution at any one or more of its offices or branches via hereby is designated as a depository for the funds of the Independent School District five forty-four, which may be withdrawn on checks, draft, advices of debt, notes, or other orders for payment of monies bearing the following appropriate number of signatures. Any three of the following named officers or employees of the entity whose actual signatures are shown below. Kirby Anderson, Jeffrey Drake, Melissa Hermes, Renee McAlet, Natalie Knutson. And that the financial institution shall be and is authorized to honor and pay the same whether or not they are payable to bear or to the individual order of any agent or agents signing the same. So could I have someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
Oh, offer the resolution, move for, move for its adoption.
In a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
Um, I need to recuse.
Steven Biggessa.
I have to recuse.
Oh. Kirby Anderson.
Yes. But thanks for calling me first.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. The resolution is adopted.
Um, so.
One time I get called first.
We have a rate change for our early childhood programs. Currently, they're at a hundred and five dollars per month per spot. Effective for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, that has been bumped up to a hundred and twenty dollars per month per spot. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Then we'll go on to the revisions to the following school district policies, um, which Missy and I talked about. Five fifteen, protection and privacy of pupil records, five point four, internet acceptable use and safety policy. Five thirty-three, district wellness, physical activity and nutrition policy, and five thirty-four, the school meals policy. Can I get a motion to approve those revisions?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Um. We have a resolution for Minnesota School Board recognition law. Whereas the Fergus Falls Public School, the school's ISD five forty-four recognizes the importance of public education in our community. And whereas the Fergus Falls Public Schools ISD five forty-four appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system. And whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools. And whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal governments and ensuring compliance with state and federal laws. And whereas school board members sublously devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren. Whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district, public and public expectations to the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fergus Falls Public School ISD five forty-four recognizes and salutes the members of the Fergus Falls Public School, uh, School ISD five forty-fourth School Board by proclaiming February twenty twenty-three as school board recognition law. Could I get somebody to offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
Oh, offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
In a second.
I'll second.
There you go, guys.
Bar of sauce on the back.
Missy, do you think?
Yes, I would love to. Steven Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson. Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. The resolution is adopted.
And we have a motion for partial adoption of the high school English curriculum, Common Lit, uh, which Amelia Lamar presented to us. Effective for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Could I get a motion to approve that partial adoption?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Um, any or say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. So we are going to head into a closed session permitted by Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision point two to discuss non-public data. Could I get a motion to close the?
So moved.
Second.
Um, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The session is closed.